Okay, good morning. It is 9:10 a.m. and we are starting up proceeding this morning, an appeal of the Hearing Examiner's decision. My name is Ty Mensah, Chair of the Board of County Commissioners. I'll be presiding over today's appeal. With me here today are Vice Chair and Commissioner Wayne Fournier, seated to my right, Commissioner Emily Klaus, seated to my left, Commissioner Rachel Grant is excused, and Commissioner Carolina Mejia has recused herself from this proceeding. Today's date is February 12th, as I said, and we are now on the record, I think I get to bang my thing, in an appeal of the Hearing Examiner's decision dated December 23rd, 2024, filed by J&amp;K Investments LLC. This appeal pertains to the Hearing Examiner's denial of a request for zoning variance. The lot in question is located within an area zoned RRR 1 to 5. The applicant in this appeal sought a variance to allow the construction of a residential garage prior to when a primary residential structure could be added to their property. Pursuant to Thurston County Code, Section 2034-030, all of pertinent structures, including garages, must be located on the same lot as the primary use or building. The application seeks a variance from this requirement in the zoning code. The Hearing Examiner denied the application after applying seven enumerated criteria pursuant to Thurston County Code, Section 2052-020. The Hearing Examiner concluded that the applicant failed to satisfy in whole or part four of the seven criteria. Reviewing this just briefly, according to the Hearing Examiner, and these are quotes from the opinion, "Granting the variance application would result in the allowance of a use which is not classified as a permitted or special use in RRR 1 to 5 zoning district." "Granting the variance application would confer a special privilege to the property because it will allow a land use, i.e. an accessory garage, on a lot with no principal use that is prohibited in the RRR 1 to 5 zoning district." Because granting the variance application would result in a use that is not allowed in the zoning district, the variance application is not in harmony with the general purpose and intent of the zoning district. And then finally, because granting the variance application would result in a use that is not allowed in the zoning district, the variance application is materially detrimental to the public welfare. So the applicant is now appealing the Hearing Examiner's decision to the Board of County Commissioners, requesting reversal and approval of their application for variance. The appellant alleges the examiner erred by interpreting the variance criteria improperly and misapplying the criteria to the facts presented to the examiner. This is a closed-record appeal, meaning the Board's review of facts is limited to evidence presented to the examiner. The Board reviews questions of law de novo, engaging in the same inquiry as the Hearing Examiner. The issue before the Board today is whether the evidence presented to the Hearing Examiner demonstrated that the appellant's application complied with the variance review criteria set forth in Thurston County Code, 2052-020. In quasi-judicial appeals, the Board of Commissioners is subject to the appearance of fairness doctrine, codified in Chapter 4236 of RCW. Under this doctrine, Board members are not authorized to have ex parte communications with the parties after an appeal has been filed with the Board. However, if there have been ex parte communications since the appeal was filed, or communication or relationships with any of the parties that may exist, that may appear to impact their impartiality, then the substance of that communication or relationship needs to be disclosed. In addition, each Board member must be able to impartially judge this case on the facts contained in the record and the applicable law. Commissioner Carolina Mejia has recused herself from participating in ruling on the merits of this hearing. Less than two months ago, she received ex parte communication from either opponents or proponents of the proposal on appeal that may complicate her involvement as a quasi-judicial decision-maker. At this time, I will ask each of the other Commissioners present to make a declaration for the record, and I'll start with Commissioner Klaus.
Thank you, Chair. Since the appeal was filed on October 3rd, 2024, I have not had any ex parte communications with any of the parties to this appeal, and I affirm that I can fairly and impartially judge this case on the facts in the record and applicable law.
Commissioner Fournier?
Since the appeal was filed on October 3rd, 2024, I have not had any ex parte communications with any of the parties of this appeal, and I affirm I can fairly and impartially judge this case on the facts in the record and applicable by law.
And similarly, since this appeal was filed on October 3rd, 2024, I have not had any ex parte communication with any parties to this appeal, and I affirm that I can fairly and impartially judge this case on the facts in the record and applicable law. Do any of the parties have objections or challenges to any Board member to decide this case?
Appellants do not.
Okay, thank you. So now we will move to our oral argument section. The appellant has an opportunity to present 15 minutes of oral argument. Oral argument may not present new information or evidence, but must be limited to the evidence in the record and the specific issues raised in the appellant's appeal. I understand the department will not be presenting oral argument, but is available to answer questions from the Board. The Board, if it has any questions, will ask them of the parties during or after argument. Any questions before we begin oral argument, counsel? Okay, so you'll have 15 minutes, and our clerk of the Board will indicate when you have two minutes remaining, and so we will start that timer, and you may begin.
I appreciate you having me here this morning. I was here a few months ago. It's nice to be back. My name is Chris Pierce Wright. I'm a counsel for the appellant J&amp;K Investments. The facts aren't at issue here. We have no problem with what the Hearing Examiner included in his decision outlining the relevant facts to this case and this appeal. We haven't challenged those, and our briefing largely adopts them. The issue with the Hearing Examiner's decision is that he incorrectly applied the Thurston County Code to those facts, and this requires a set of statutory interpretations, which may or may not come second-hand to you, and so what I plan to do is to go through the relevant provisions of the Thurston County Code to identify what our argument is and why the Hearing Examiner erred. There are a couple cases that the Hearing Examiner cited that I think are incorrectly applied to this case. I'll discuss those briefly as well. The starting place for this appeal, as Commissioner Mensah mentioned, is Chapter 2034 of the Thurston County Code, which addresses where accessory uses are allowed. Under O1O of that chapter, accessory uses are permitted in any zoning district except as prohibited or limited. They're permitted except as prohibited or limited. The limitations under Chapter 2034 are identified in Section 030. That section is titled Limitations on Accessory Uses. It has about 13 different subsections that identify limitations or prohibitions. When engaging in statutory interpretation, which this calls for, you have to understand both the context and the plain language used in the relevant provision. This O30 section is key to this appeal because it identifies the difference between a limitation and a prohibition. There are three explicit prohibitions that I'm aware of in that section. Subsection 5 prohibits barbed wire in certain residential districts. Subsection 11 prohibits junk yards, except with exceptions to that prohibition, in a different chapter, and Subsection 13 prohibits hazardous waste facilities, onsite treatment of hazardous waste, except in certain industrial and commercial zones. The other provisions of that section are limitations. Specifically, as Commissioner Mensah mentioned, accessory uses shall be on the same lot of record as the principal building or use unless a provision of this title allows otherwise. That is a limitation. It doesn't prohibit accessory uses in RRR 15 zones. It doesn't prohibit accessory uses in any zone. It's a limitation in the same way that Subsection 2 is a limitation. Antenna structures, satellite dishes, have to be more than 20 feet beyond the boundary of a parcel. That's not a prohibition on antennas or satellite structures. It's a limitation. Both of those subsections act as limitations, not prohibitions. That's the background to how the variance criteria apply under 2052-020, most relevant to Subsection 1. Under that subsection, a use, I'm paraphrasing, must be a permitted use or a special use in the district. Accessory uses are permitted in every district except as limited or prohibited. They are not prohibited in the subject district, and so they are limited. That's not a special type of use. A limited use is not a use under the code. It's a restriction on how certain uses can apply. Subsection 1 of the variance criteria doesn't prohibit accessory structures in the way that the Hearing Examiner concluded. The Hearing Examiner cited two cases, neither of which stand for the propositions that he proposes. The New York case, Sinon, addresses criteria that aren't included in the Thurston County Code. It's simply not relevant. The court there addressed economic hardship, concluded that the applicant hadn't identified any economic hardship. The Thurston County variance criteria don't have an economic hardship requirement. Case isn't relevant. The second case is Coughlin. In that case, the court concluded that a nonconforming use, a rest home, an elder rest home, could be expanded under variance criteria that prohibited or did not allow the expansion of a use that was otherwise prohibited. We aren't addressing a nonconforming use here, so the case isn't helpful. It doesn't identify whether an accessory use under the Thurston County Code is treated as a permitted or a special use. It is for the reasons I just explained. At best, the case is irrelevant. At worst, it concludes that a nonconforming use, which is not otherwise prohibited, an accessory use is not otherwise prohibited under Thurston County Code. For that reason, it shouldn't, the Hearing Examiner erred in concluding, he shouldn't have concluded, that the application failed O2O Subsection 1 of the variance criteria. The second criteria that the Hearing Examiner considered, and the only other one that the Hearing Examiner considered in any depth, was a prohibition against special privileges denied to other parcels in the district. We address two cases in our briefing that outline how that analysis has to occur. The first case is the St. Cloud case. You might recall, in that case, one property owner had three adjoining parcels bordering on a lakefront, 40, 30, and 10 feet wide. Under county code at the time, those were automatically combined by operation of law. Somehow, the county messed up, granted a building permit for the property owner to construct a second house on that parcel. That was an error. They came back and said, "No, you can't do this. You have to apply for a variance." The Court of Appeals concluded that that was granting a special privilege because the situation was unique to that applicant. The applicant had been granted a building permit. The building permit was improper. The applicant said, "Look, I'm in a hard situation here. I have this building permit." She also complained that her sister was in poor health, so that the variance should be granted. The court concluded that that was a special privilege because the reason for the variance didn't relate to the underlying property. There was nothing about the property that justified what the applicant was requesting. It was just her own unique circumstances, her sister's health, and her prior receipt of a building permit. The situation is different here because it's undisputed that the situation that the applicant faces here is unique to the property. There aren't any sewer or water connections available, and the property's characteristics, the soil of the property will not allow an onsite septic system to be installed. Those are unique to the property. Any person that purchased this property would face the same problems. There is no special privilege unique to this applicant. The Hearing Examiner relied on another case, which is often cited, but isn't applicable here because it relies on a different statutory provision. In the Hoberg case, the court concluded that the language that prohibited any special privilege inconsistent with limitation upon uses applied to other properties in the district. That's the phrase that's key and is different between the Hoberg case and the Thurston County Code, limitation upon uses. In the Hoberg case, the court concluded that that phrase distinguished between area variances, things like limiting setbacks, probably things like maximum height restrictions, weren't restricted, but different types of variances having to do with uses were restricted. That isn't included in the Thurston County Code, and that difference has to mean something under principles of statutory interpretation. Under the Hearing Examiner's interpretation, the Thurston County Code, which prohibits any special privilege denied to any other property in the district, means a variance could never be granted because everything would be a special privilege. That can't possibly be true, and it's inconsistent with a plain reading of the statutory provision at issue. The Hearing Examiner didn't contend with the St. Clair case. That case identifies how the special privilege language should be applied in this context because it addresses the same language that the Thurston County Code applies here. The Hearing Examiner considered two other provisions without providing any serious analysis of those provisions, first concluding that allowing this use would be detrimental to the public welfare. I don't quite understand how that could be possible. The Hearing Examiner didn't explain. There was a lot of public comment before the Hearing Examiner, that a garage would somehow increase crime. It would be unsightly. The structure was too big. None of those things are either supported or relevant. The size of the structure is not what's before you. There's no evidence that a garage will increase the amount of crime, especially as compared to what the condition of the property was before, which was an overgrown mess with a bunch of junk thrown throughout the property. There is no evidence in the record to suggest that a garage would be detrimental to the public welfare, and I think a good alternative to consider is the code allows agricultural uses, including agriculture accessory uses. An agricultural use is something that can include processing, housing of livestock, including warehousing of agricultural materials. That's allowed in this zone. It's unreasonable, in my opinion, to conclude that that type of use, which is permitted outright, is detrimental to the public welfare, which is basically what the Hearing Examiner concludes here. I don't think there's any support in the record for it. I think that was a clear error on his part. The second subsection, which he addresses without any serious analysis, was to conclude that allowing an accessory use here, allowing the construction of a garage before primary residents could be built, is inconsistent with the purpose of the zoning title. I don't think that's accurate either. The primary purpose of the zoning title is allowing property to be put to use. It identifies certain instances in which certain uses are inconsistent. For instance, in the accessory use provision I cited earlier, there are certain provisions, for instance, limiting junk yards, limiting different types of uses that aren't consistent with each other. The comprehensive plan also identifies certain ways in which certain types of uses might be inconsistent with each other, for instance, screening agricultural uses from residential uses. That makes sense. This is not an agricultural use, even though agricultural uses are permitted outright. The Hearing Examiner erred in concluding that allowing this property to be put to use, allowing J&amp;K Investments to have the benefit of its investment-backed expectations, concluding that that could not occur, was an error under the Thurston County Code. I want to address two final points that came up below. One is a repeated assertion that the use would be commercial somehow. There is no evidence for that. I think that's a boogeyman, people trying to rile up public animosity to this project. There is no evidence that this will be put to commercial use. The applicant has no problem with a condition of approval prohibiting commercial use. Commercial use would be a violation of the code. The applicant is well aware of that. The second is, in our briefing, we identified, and the applicant is certainly willing, to improve the property with residents as soon as the relevant connections become available. Water and utility connections aren't available currently. It's possible they will in the near future. I identified in my briefing that the applicant would be willing to agree to a condition, and stipulates that it would improve the property with a single-family residence as soon as it is legally possible to do so under the Thurston County Code. I don't have any more, unless you have any more questions for me.
Questions for counsel? No. Okay, really appreciate that. Thank you to everyone who's here to listen or participate. The Board will issue a written decision, honored before March 5th, 2025. Okay. Back to our agenda this morning. Next, the Board will move into a closed session pursuant to RCW 4230-140, Subsection 2, which relates to that portion of a meeting of a quasi-judicial body, which relates to a quasi-judicial matter between named parties, specifically the appeal of the Hearing Examiner's decision, J&amp;K Investments LLC. This will be 30 minutes approximately. If there's an extension needed, we'll make that announcement, but... It's 9:29, so we will be in closed session until 10 a.m. So.
We are back. A short recess on our work session. We covered the items one and two. We're up to item three, Public Defense State of the Department. Commissioner Mejia has been able to rejoin us. Commissioner Klaus is at a meeting for the Orca Clean Air Agency. So she's excused. And we're picking up here with State of the Department. We have our full public defense team. So I'll turn it over to Director Pat Conner.
Well, thank you, Commissioner. And good morning, Commissioners. Patrick Focana is the Director of Thurston County Public Defense. This is an opportunity that I try to take every year following early in the year to take a look back at how our year was last year and things to look forward to this year. I'd like to just introduce my team I brought with me today. Start to my right, Katie Venna, our Executive Assistant. She'll be taking notes. To my right, Jose Vargas. This is a special moment for us as a department as Jose is retiring after almost eight years of sterling service, not just to our department but to the county. Jose's been outstanding fiscal manager for us. But in addition to all his accomplishments with our department, Jose was always a team player for the county. So projects that came up that needed his expertise or background, Jose always raised his hand to say, "I'll help," even for things that really had nothing to do with public defense. So we're sad to see him go, but he's meant a lot to us as a department. After sterling year, sterling career in the military and then with state government, joined us to finish his career and now he's retiring in Florida. To my left, Mia Pagnata. Mia is our new fiscal manager. Been training with Jose for the past couple of months. Mia was with us for a long, many, many years before a short stint in state government. Now she's back to take over as our new fiscal manager. And to her left is T.D. Davis, our Administrative Service Manager. So I'm proud of this team and proud of all my managing attorneys who are busy in court this morning, so aren't going to be able to make it. Okay, so maybe we'll go to the first slide. You've got 30 minutes. So I'll probably get to move as quickly as I can, but certainly leave any opportunities for questions the Commissioners have if I go through slides and then a little baked in time at the end. So some topics that we'll go over accompanying slides is our budget from last year and report out and how we did and how we performed, some challenges that we foresee this year with our budgets, also opportunities. A look back at our workloads for last year and a look ahead from the management team for exciting things this year and challenges for this year, and then an open forum. So we'll go to the next slide.
So what I like to do, and I know Commissioner Mejia and Commissioner Mensah are aware, because we're always leading these State of the Departments with budget, especially looking back. So we, there's a lot of information on this slide, but I'll cut to the high points, which is obviously the county went through a budget reduction exercise for 2024 and 2025. We took our reduction and with Jose's leadership and creativity from the department, we're able to manage that reduction of about $400,000 to our professional services budget and finished 2024 in the black a little over $22,000. We've got some outstanding revenues that we're working on, but once again, we're able to manage that. It's very challenging in our work. As many of you know, public defense is very dynamic in terms of expenses. We have a lot of variables year to year, primarily caseloads and the work that comes to us from year to year. It's hard to forecast that work. It's hard to forecast the budget impacts of the work. But once again, we were able to manage last year's budget in the black. That makes seven years in a row for us. The past seven years, we've remitted roughly $2.7 million back to the general fund. So I'm very proud of that.
I just want to say, Patrick, for you and your team, I have come to really appreciate your team approach to working on problems. And you and your team have always been, and I can imagine, I wasn't here when you did the budget reductions, but always been focused on solutions and trying to make it work. So thank you, because your team does a lot of work, a lot of demands, and what we have in you is a leader that translates the board's direction and works that through with your team so that they understand the mission and you work through the sensitivities. So that's a lot to be said for going through challenging fiscal times and that team approach. You example very well. So thanks for that.
Thank you, Leonard. It's a team effort, of course, and it's not just the team that you see before you today. It's these messages trickle down all the way throughout our entire staff. We had all staff yesterday where I reviewed the very slide you're looking at right now, and I reviewed some of the challenges ahead. So I think it's important that our staff understand our budget at a high level and understand some of the challenges. As I say to them, you can't change your work. I'm not asking you to. I just want you to be aware of that. But thank you, Leonard, for the compliment. It's challenging and it takes a team. I think we go to the next slide unless there are any other questions about that slide. Okay. So looking ahead to this year, we've identified some challenges, challenges slash opportunities. But the items that I've identified for this slide, again, we have, we're heading into this year with a matching reduction of about $400,000 to our professional services. That's a challenge when coupled with some of these other bullet points. As you know, public defense is unique in a lot of ways, but one particular uniqueness is that not only am I, are we managing and recruiting and trying to retain staff, I also have to recruit and retain in the private sector, which is a little unique in that we work with independent contracting attorneys to do conflict of interest work. So I am competing in that market as well as the county employment market. One of the challenges right now, and it's been a challenge to be candid for several years now, is competing with surrounding counties on compensation for those contractors. We lag behind. We did a study on this, and of course, I get feedback from those contractors of surrounding counties paying up to 50% more than we were paying. So I did lose a couple contractors to surrounding counties for compensation, so I had to make some adjustments to compete because we can't do our work without those independent contractors. And we have to stay competitive in the private sector market, just as we're trying to stay competitive in the public sector market with our staff. So that's one change to 2025. Again, we forecasted expenses, but we're going to have to see how those expenses play out. Of course, we'll communicate with all these topics along the way with county staff and ultimately with the Board of County Commissioners.
So I'm sorry, but that second bar where it says increased contractor compensation?
Yeah.
That's in other counties?
No, that's our county. So I had to raise compensation rates to our contractors to keep them here because I was losing, I've already lost a couple contractors to the surrounding county because they were paying more, in a couple counties significantly more than I was paying them. So their question was, why work here when I can make twice almost what you're paying me in a surrounding county? So I had to raise some compensation.
I get it. I just was like not sure you had that.
We are back, short recess on our work session. We covered the items one and two. We're up to item three, public defense, state of the department. Commissioner Mahia has been able to rejoin us. Commissioner Klaus is at a meeting for the Orca Clean Air Agency. So she's excused and we're picking up here with state of the department. We have our full public defense team, so I'll turn it over to Director Pat Conner.
Well, thank you, Commissioner, and good morning, Commissioners. Patrick Focana, Director of Thurston County Public Defense. This is an opportunity that I try to take every year following, early in the year, to take a look back at how our year was last year and things to look forward to this year. I'd like to just introduce my team I brought with me today. Start to my right, Katie Venna, our executive assistant. She'll be taking notes. To my right, Jose Vargas. This is a special moment for us as a department as Jose is retiring after almost eight years of sterling service, not just to our department but to the county. Jose's been outstanding fiscal manager for us. But in addition to all his accomplishments with our department, Jose was always a team player for the county. So projects that came up that needed his expertise or background, Jose always raised his hand to say, "I'll help," even for things that really had nothing to do with public defense. So we're sad to see him go, but he's meant a lot to us as a department. After sterling year, sterling career in the military and then with state government, joined us to finish his career and now he's retiring in Florida. To my left, Mia Pagnata. Mia is our new fiscal manager, been training with Jose for the past couple of months. Mia was with us for a long, many years before a short stint in state government. Now she's back to take over as our new fiscal manager. And to her left is T D Davis, our administrative service manager. So I'm proud of this team and proud of all my managing attorneys who are busy in court this morning, so aren't going to be able to make it. Okay, so maybe we'll go to the first slide. You've got 30 minutes, so I'll probably get them as quickly as I can, but certainly leave any opportunities for questions the Commissioners have. I go through slides and then a little baked in time at the end. So some topics that we'll go over accompanying slides is our budget from last year and report out and how we did and how we performed. Some challenges that we foresee this year with our budgets, also opportunities. A look back at our workloads for last year and a look ahead from the management team for exciting things this year and challenges for this year, and then an open forum. So we'll go to the next slide. So what I like to do, and I know Commissioner Mahia and Commissioner Mensah are aware, because we're always leading these state of the departments with budget, especially looking back. So we, there's a lot of information on this slide, but I'll cut to the high points, which is obviously the county went through a budget reduction exercise for 2024 and 2025. We took our reduction and with Jose's leadership and creativity from the department, were able to manage that reduction of about $400,000 to our professional services budget and finished 2024 in the black a little over $22,000. We've got some outstanding revenues that we're working on, but once again, we're able to manage that. It's very challenging in our work. As many of you know, public defense is very dynamic in terms of expenses. We have a lot of variables year to year, primarily caseloads and the work that comes to us from year to year. It's hard to forecast that work. It's hard to forecast the budget impacts of the work. But once again, we were able to manage last year's budget in the black. That makes seven years in a row for us. The past seven years, we've remitted roughly $2.7 million back to the general fund. So I'm very proud of that.
Pardon?
Yes.
I want to say, Patrick, for you and your team, I have come to really appreciate your team approach to working on problems. And you and your team have always been, and I can imagine, I wasn't here when you did the budget reductions, but always been focused on solutions and trying to make it work. So thank you, because your team does a lot of work, a lot of demands. And what we have in you is a leader that translates the board's direction and works that through with your team so that they understand the mission and you work through the sensitivities. So that's a lot to be said for going through challenging fiscal times and that team approach. You example very well, so thanks for that.
Thank you, Leonard. It's a team effort, of course, and it's not just the team that you see before you today. It's, these messages trickle down all the way throughout our entire staff. We had all staffed yesterday where I reviewed the very slide you're looking at right now. And I reviewed some of the challenges ahead. So I think it's important that our staff understand our budget at a high level and understand some of the challenges. As I say to them, this, you can't change your work. I'm not asking you to, I just want you to be aware of that. But thank you, Leonard, for the compliment. It's challenging and it takes a, it takes a team. I think we go to the next slide unless there are any other questions about that slide. Okay. So looking ahead to this year, we've identified some challenges, again, challenges slash opportunities. But the items that I've identified for this slide, again, we have, we're heading into this year with a matching reduction of, you know, about $400,000 to our professional services. That's a challenge when coupled with some of these other bullet points. As you know, public defense is unique in a lot of ways. But one particular uniqueness is that not only am I, are we managing and recruiting and trying to retain staff, I also have to recruit and retain in the private sector, which is a little unique in that we work with independent contracting attorneys to do conflict of interest work. So I am competing in that market as well as the county employment market. One of the challenges right now, and it's been a challenge, to be candid, for several years now, is competing with surrounding counties on compensation for those contractors. We lag behind, we did a study on this, and of course, I get feedback from those contractors of surrounding counties paying up to 50% more than we were paying. So I did lose a couple contractors to surrounding counties for compensation, so had to make some adjustments to compete because we can't do our work without those independent contractors. And we have to stay competitive in the private sector market, just as we're trying to stay competitive in the public sector market with our staff. So that's one change to 2025. Again, we forecasted expenses, but we're going to have to see how those expenses play out. Of course, we'll communicate with all these topics along the way with county staff and ultimately with the Board of County Commissioners.
So, I'm sorry, but that second bar where it says increased contractor compensation?
Yeah.
That's in other counties?
No, that's our county. So I had to raise compensation rates to our contractors to keep them here because I was losing, I've already lost a couple contractors to the surrounding county because they were paying more, and in a couple counties significantly more than I was paying them. So their question was, why work here when I can make twice almost what you're paying me in a surrounding county? So I had to raise some compensation.
I just was like not sure you had that latitude. I mean, I know there's some cases, some are on kit per case basis and some hourly.
Yeah, so we do hourly's and flat fee case compensation.
And both of those were raised?
Yes, as well as some, so yeah, so we forecasted the impacts. We believe it's within budget, but again, we're going to have to see the workloads.
So just out of curiosity, for the hourly, what is, what was the increase like?
We, now, it depends on the type of case. Certainly happy to follow up with more, greater detail on that. So if it's a Class A, let's say adult case, our current hourly rate is $125 an hour, where previously it was $90 an hour. Surrounding counties, Lewis County, Graves Harbor County, Pierce County, we're already paying that, but they were paying that for B and C felony. So we were lagging behind just in our most serious significant case compensation to those counties for even less serious representation. So understandably, contractors were attracted by surrounding counties for compensation.
And B and C is at 90 or?
Pardon?
B and C is at 90 for us or?
No, we're still continuing to pay those. B and C representations for conflict counsel had a flat rate, but we did raise that rate. So again, just to stay competitive.
All right.
Thank you. The next, next highlight here is expert rate increases. So as public defense, our experts and services that attorneys are ethically obligated to pursue to defend a client, they were not paid for by the state. So unlike other agencies, we have to pay out to an expert to defend a case, whether it's a DNA expert, a forensic expert, any kind of expert you can imagine. The criminal justice system comes out of our budget. And just like every other professional service in America, candidly, over the past three to five years, they've raised their rates too due to inflation and their cost of living and running their business. So we've seen those rates steadily increase. Again, that's not something that we set the rate, they set their rates. They do offer, you know, a public service rates, which are a little reduced from the private sector, but again, we've seen their rates increase as well. So that's another variable this year. When I say challenges and opportunities, yes, Commissioner?
Sorry, I was going to ask, like, what's the percentage rate that you're seeing for experts?
Percentage of use or?
Of increase for the rate increase.
I think we'd have to get back to you on that, Commissioner, and take a look at the previous rates from a three-year window, a three-year look back. I know that our budget team has seen those rates increase, but I have to get back to you with a percentage.
Thank you.
So when I, I didn't put a slash on the top of this slide, but there are opportunities. So I'm extremely excited for this year to have offered internal promotions for well-deserving staff. So I defrayed those promotions last year with the budget reduction exercise and an abundance of caution. Had the conversations with the qualified candidates, but I needed to be measured and they needed to understand that there was a risk with that budget exercise. And I asked for patience, candidly, a 12-month period of patience for well-deserving county employees, especially in this marketplace. So I have five new senior defense attorneys that are 10-plus-year attorneys that are well-deserving, that are committed to this work. And in this marketplace right now, it is, would be very, very challenging for me to recruit and find their replacements. So in addition to them obviously being merit-based, well-deserving promotions, it's also a retention effort. So the overall impact is, is not a large hit to our budget or anything like that, but again, it's another factor, right? So the $22,000 that we were in the black for this year, that would be consumed by these five promotions. But again, decisions you have to make as a director to take care of your people and your best people and your most tenure. And the last bullet point, which of course, the board is, I know is a looming issue and touch upon at the end of this presentation, and I expect there'll be any more conversations to come, is the forecasting of new public defense unit defense standards in 2025. Go to the next slide. Quick look back on workload. Workload, of course, for us is one of our biggest drivers for a variety of reasons, not just the clients that were appointed by the court, but tying back into budget, our biggest budget impact. When there are changes in the number of clients that we serve every year, we either A, have to have enough staff to handle those changes, and depending on the composition of cases, can increase expenses with professional services, investigations, et cetera, across the board. So I'll be real sort of high level on this. Moving left to right are the number of district courts. So those are our adult misdemeanor and gross misdemeanor clients that the court appointed. Last year, we had a 154% increase in the number of clients that we served compared to 2023. That's about almost two full trial attorney workload differences than the previous year. So those are things heading into 2024. As an example, forecasting what will be our workload for our clients served in 2024. It's hard for me to predict that we would see that kind of increase, but that's just, that's the, again, that's the nature of our work and that's the challenges and the variability. The next slide, and again, these are total assignments to our office. So the court assigns clients to the public defender's office for representation if they qualify, and we take those assignments and we make a determination whether we can represent them internally because there's no conflict of interest or have to assign them to one of the contract attorneys that I mentioned earlier, recently raised. Bless you. The second chart is our juvenile workload. So really happy with the juvenile workload for last year, not just because it's less impactful on our office, but these are kids. So we had less kids in our juvenile justice system than we did in 2023. Almost about over 75% of what we saw in 2023 is the clients we served in 2024. So that's a good thing. The last column represents our total of superior court clients as our adult felony clients. Again, a dip in the number of clients compared to 2023 that we served in 2024, a little over 70%, less cases. So I'll pause for a second if there are any questions, but again, this is informational, Commissioner?
You want to go first?
Go ahead.
Well, and how, so I guess I'm trying to understand the trend for us, but.
Sure.
And I'm guessing it's Blake up and down, right? I mean, right?
Yes, so if you, great, great question. When you look at trends, we had COVID. So the COVID numbers in 2020 and 2021?
Right.
Dramatically dropped the number of cases in the justice system across the board.
Sure.
And in combination with the Blake decision, right? That certainly played a big factor in the data that you see in those two years with booking restriction.
Blake was overturned 22 or?
Blake was 2020. The Blake decision came out.
Right, but it was overturned 22, 23.
Yes, correct. Yeah, and we've seen minimal numbers of cases.
Overturned, you mean?
I can follow, follow up with the data.
The legislative fix or something?
Yeah.
I don't know what you were going to say, fixed, but.
Yeah. Pre-Blake, when they were felony possession charges and the number of clients that we saw appointed, we'd averaged about 500 clients a year when they were possession cases, charges, felonies. I can circle back with the data that we've seen since the Blake fix and the legislation that makes it a gross misdemeanor, precipitous, precipitous decline in the number of cases.
The WASSIP study kind of reflects the same.
Yeah.
Pardon? The WASSIP jail, jail.
Jail study, yeah.
Residencies or jail stays reflects kind of the same data.
Yeah.
As far as like SUDS treatment, just dropped.
Yeah.
So, so I'm sorry, this is, okay, so the fact that Superior Court went down and District Court went way up, that's really the shifting of the drug possession cases from felonies to misdemeanors?
Yeah, I, no, the, the increase in the District Court appointments was not related to an increase in those post-Blake fix cases being charged. We don't see a lot of those, and I'd have to pull the numbers to show you year to date. It's other, it's other crimes, it's other appointments for cases.
That's interesting.
It is interesting.
And I mean, it's good, I guess, I mean, it's good to see lower Superior Court. You know, it's good to see that trend now because those are the more serious cases. We don't want to see a spike in District Court, but, I mean, I'm just curious, like, how, what's going on? Like, how do you see, that's a pretty, let's say, I mean, 23 to 24, like, that's not just, that's not just noise. Like, that's like a 60% increase in District Court filings. And then you look over Superior Court and, you know, that's, that's not an insignificant decline, that's like 11 or 12% decline in Superior Court.
So we track, we track the data in terms of types of crimes. Happy to circle back with you to show you more of a breakdown of 2024 crime types of appointments. I didn't conclude that in the materials today because of, I'm happy to circle back on that because we do track that data.
Just because of the dramaticness of those graphs. I think I would like to see that because, you know, obviously with Blake, and, you know, I, the Blake thing is an interesting thing, totally separate conversation, probably a good conversation for Law and Justice Counsel, but, you know, I always got frustrated because the, the crime, I mean, we all know it was kind of a technicality, right? I mean, it wasn't, wasn't like the legislature came in and go, you know, we think we're too harsh on drug possession. It's the Supreme Court that came in and go, the way your statute's worded, it doesn't allow, you know, it was a technicality. And, but there was a percolating feeling amongst, you know, certain researchers that we were treating drug possession, you know, not. So it was kind of a convergence, right? What actually changed it was a technical, legal technicality, but it, it harmonized with some thinking that was happening, I think, at the legislative level. And then, you know, and I, I understand that the police officers in the wake of that, like, the first, there was the first fix and then the second fix, I call it, like, the first fix, like, they had to do three, they had to like log it and law enforcement was telling us that, well, it wasn't, it was too difficult for them to track, like, the different touch points before they were allowed to file a charge. And then there was the second fix, which maybe just basically created a misdemeanor level offense, which should have made it super easy for them to just replace all of those drug charges that were felonies and be misdemeanors, but they didn't. So the whole concept of the fact that, that, that conduct needed to be punished at felony level was kind of undercut by the fact that law enforcement has an opportunity, they don't charge it at the misdemeanor level.
Yeah, and so, you know.
If it's that dangerous, right? If it's so dangerous it needed to be a felony, then it should be being charged.
Every cop that I talked to told they would charge it, but then it was, it would come down to prosecutors actually doing something with it.
So they were charging just as many, but they just weren't resulting in assignments to public defender?
That, that was what, that was the anecdotal stories that I heard. It was like, well, we just stopped charging it because prosecutors wouldn't do anything with it.
Well, all I can say, and then I'll, you know, just, just to share and I'll keep moving forward unless there's any questions, is at least as an administrator, right? Pre-Blake, having to have staffing levels of, you know, roughly three full-time FTE felony attorneys, so that's, you know, about $450,000 worth of salary and benefits just to do those possession cases was me a tough pill to swallow because it's a dedication of, you know, those resources and budget to defending those cases. And so from my perspective, at least as an administrator, being able to reallocate those resources in different ways and not tying their case stats up with those cases has been a relief. I'm going to keep moving because I.
Yeah, sorry. I mean, we don't want to hang you up too far.
Probably right up against it with the auditorium.
I have a question, it's like, I just have a question. I'm sorry, I'm just going to take us back a slide just really quick because it's burning in my head and I can't even, the, I'm just wanting to ask you about the expert rate rate increases that, so I'm just wondering, well, here's what I'll say, is that there was a study done by, by DSHS at one point in time where we studied this, the trend of what this expert, because there's some money that's allocated for the defense to be able to pull down when an expert is needed in ITA cases.
Yes.
Right. And, and so I was just wondering if you knew about that study and that, or if you've seen that, because increased contractor compensation and expert rate increases are general budgetary, right? We know they're going to increase every year, but not, but unless you have, well, what you've just talked about, you are looking at your data so you know how much, you know, what it's going to look like and what your trend is. I'm just wondering if we ever draw down any of that funding from, from DSHS and that pot of money that was allocated, you know?
So I'm, yeah, again, I'm not familiar with the study on, on the ITAs.
Second opinion.
Yeah, so for second opinions, if that's more of a competency issue?
Yeah.
So if the issue is competency?
Yeah, yeah.
Then, then yes, we do.
You do pull down some.
We have an entire reimbursement process.
All right, that's what I was wondering. That's the work we did, which was to try to figure out what, what we needed to, to give you guys in order for you to be compensated, we did these increase rates. We did a big study for like a 20.
So whether it's competency of expert, forensic expert to evaluate for competency or to evaluate for diminished capacity defenses, not guilty by reason of insanity defenses, those expert rates on average, and again, I'm just throwing out, are very, very high.
Oh, yeah.
The reimbursement rate from DSHS is $800.
Yes, so cheap, I know.
So when the bill's 4,500 and we, we do get reimbursed, so I can give you the sum total, what we.
Just wondering.
We try to get reimbursed every dollar because, again, they're very expensive and I'm sure as the Commissioners are, you know, familiar with. We continue to just see rises in acutely mentally ill individuals getting arrested. And so competency is always an issue in those cases and/or other mental health defenses. So that's sort of in tandem with all unit cases and rate increases that drive our expenses.
And I, I only brought that up, you all, for everyone, just because I wanted to say it out loud, that, you know, there's, it's the complication of the amount of expense that's due to the increase in mental health is, is falling back to the counties, right?
Yes, 100%.
And, you know, now this new role that I'm in, where it used to sit on the other side at DSHS, I am surely understanding now that there's a need to make it very public, that we need to increase reimbursement from the state level.
You have my full support, collaboration. Any, any way we can help champion that.
Okay, yeah.
So I'm going to, okay, we'll go ahead and skip to the next, right here is perfect, you know, thank you. So I'm going to skip to the page seven, the next slide. Just shows you a real quick snapshot of what we call overage assignments. So these are the clients that are assigned to our office that if we have the adequate number of FTEs, we can represent them. And what you see here, just as a snapshot, is a trend over the years. This has been very strategic plan for myself and for the organization and with the great assistance of Jose to my right here. We really wanted to target, so this is almost eight years in the making, that we have enough resources to not have to send out cases that we could otherwise represent. And so the District Court cases on the left that we had to send out, that's just based on the sheer number of cases because I don't have enough lawyers for those, for those higher filings. But if you look at juvenile court, great year, zero cases that we sent out to contractors. And probably our biggest cost driver as, as a workload is our Superior Court adult felony cases, which are more, more serious cases, more expensive cases. That's three years in a row that we haven't had to send one client out of our office to a contract attorney that we didn't have a conflict with. And I can tell you, we don't have all the data going back to 2017, happy to provide them, but back then, we sent out about 50% of all, well, over 50% of all our adult assignments because we only had X amount of FTEs to handle them. So that's a big win for the county, that's a big win for our department. I'll move to the next slide. And I'm going to go to the next slide. This is just also data on our conflict assignments, but you, you can see the trends there, pretty static in District Court, but the significant decline in our Superior Court data on the right, where in 2019, we were sent, we sent out almost 600 cases for conflicts, down to 200, almost 260. Again, that's the difference between potential and actual legal conflict of interest, but having the bandwidth and the number of staff to handle potential conflict of interest, actual conflict of interest cases we have to send out. Okay, thank you. One final data point here is reassignments. So I highlight this because we have been impacted by attrition, just like every other business in America, and it's very impactful when we lose an attorney to the private sector or another public sector for whatever reason, because that attorney generally has a lot of clients on their caseload. And so then we have to go out, recruit and hire, takes months at an expense to do that. Meanwhile, we have dozens and dozens of clients to reassign to other lawyers because they're entitled to representation immediately. They don't have to wait, nor should they. So just highlighting the impact of those challenges. We'll move to the next slide.
So I'm just going to stop real quick. So that means, so this highlight shows that due to the loss of staff or people moving on or the inability for us to, yeah, to retain staff, then this is the number of cases we had to reassign?
That's correct.
Okay.
Yes. It's something we started tracking a handful of years ago.
That's great, yeah.
Just quickly to highlight, we can, obviously completed our strategic plan for the department this year. This, these are four strategic objectives with specific initiatives below each one. I'm not sharing those today to get too in the weeds, but we continue. I'm not sharing those today to get too in the weeds, but uh, we continue to place a high emphasis on fostering an environment and a culture within our department that people want to be a part of, that they believe in our mission, that they believe in our work. We've had a lot of successful metrics um on this strategic objective because it's a carryover from last year. We all agree that this continue, this needs to continue to be a high priority for us, for our competitive edge and professional development for our professional staff and our attorney staff. Uh, continue to work on enhancing our operational systems. Those are things like Axon, our case management system, continuing to improve upon those. We're still scratching the surface um on those systems capability to deliver better public service, but also for our staff. Preparing for the new caseload standards, should the Supreme Court adopt those? Obviously, that's a major strategic objective this year, if in fact that does happen. And then uh our move to building five. Can't emphasize uh how exciting this is uh for our office. Uh, did an off staff yesterday and again, mirror, this is the same slide and I like to show staff the same things I show you. Uh, but the room really lit up. Now, it lit up with a couple of curious eyebrows because it's a similar slide I had to the year before uh that you were excited about. Uh, but I did uh give them the assurances that, and thank you for your commitment uh to making this happen this year. Um, uh, it's my job, as I told them yesterday as a director, to provide them an adequate, a professional work environment, and they have taken one for the county team for a long time. Um, so thank you for your commitment to that. Let's see. Um, okay, so I'm gonna go briefly on this because we're about four minutes up from my time. These are some points uh to make about the public defense standards, any changes to those standards today. Uh, met with uh county manager and assistant county manager and Summer Miller on Monday with with my team. Start having conversations about uh forecasting impacts should the Supreme Court adopt the standards. So just to circle back, our professional bar association adopted new standards for public defense last March. They were forwarded on to the Supreme Court for formal room making consideration. The Supreme Court met in December of last year to consider those changes and continued their decision to this month on February twenty sixth. Certainly no more um after the twenty sixth. But what we're obviously working on and as I briefed the board on a couple of times last year, the potential impact should uh should the standards change? There's a lot of variables to the standards. One is A, obviously, is the Supreme Court going to adopt and make changes to the public defense standards? If so, what's the timeline? They have a timeline from the state bar association. Of course, they can change that timeline. Appreciate the board's support in making that recommendation to the court, should they adopt them, to modify the timeline to start in January of twenty twenty six. Um, there are, I left one out here, but I forward that on uh information to um uh to you all uh and to county staff as well. There are currently two bills, Senate bill and a House bill, they mirror each other for public defense funding uh and fund public defense at the county level at fifty percent, starting in January twenty twenty six. So those are making their way through. Obviously, they're uh corresponding those decisions at the legislature with the with the knowledge that the Supreme Court's gonna be making a decision at the end of this month. And then um, final point on forecasting Thurston County impacts. We're gonna continue to work with county staff, the county manager and assistant county manager and county finance teams together uh to uh to forecast those impacts and uh we chatted about next steps. Obviously, coming back before the board, um, at some point here to have future conversations about that.
Yeah, by the end of February, we'll come back with a forecast and talk through the mechanics of the forecast, how it's created, get board input. And as we did last year in twenty twenty four, the uh the defense caseload standards was one of the future components of risk that would have to be baked in. So the uh the budget team will be working on a model where uh based on Patrick and their confluence on a high and low of a couple of models that show the costs are on the low side, here's what it'll do in the out years. The costs are on the high side, here's what it'll do. As Patrick has stated, there are several variables. Obviously, if bills pass that augment funding, et cetera, we'll have to be um adaptive to that. But we just want to show it if, we'll probably show it in a framework of if there is no supplement funding coming from the state, here's what it will look like. And those numbers grow in twenty five, twenty six and twenty seven. Uh, the high number is a staggering number. And appreciate Patrick's budget team, bringing them in from all corners of the U S.
Take the village.
But but their advisement was, you know, county managers, you should probably lean towards the high end because of the market for attorneys, et cetera. We'll explain all of that and how they came to those numbers when we do talk about those. So we'll probably put up the forecast and then also put up specific information about those caseload standards and walk walk you through those projections.
And one final point, when I presented last year on that forecast and the models sent out by W A S A for counties to complete. We were able to complete, uh, and those were based on twenty twenty three filings. So we were able to complete that same spreadsheet for twenty twenty four data, so we have that um to work through.
Okay, thank you, guys.
Yeah, thank you.
Well, and I just, I also want to say, I'm gonna acknowledge the work that you guys do. I mean, this is incredible work and and um your leadership and um and your years of service. I um, you are known Thurston County, just so everyone is aware, the public defense team here is known for its collaboration on larger issues and um and by other states and by other counties. And I just want to make sure you all know that this work is is just amazing and um thank you for it, so.
Thank you.
Yeah.
You've got a great team, so.
Patrick is is definitely recognized in his team is and I know that Commissioner Mansour sits on the Office of Public Defense uh Board. And um anytime that there is funding available, I know that Patrick's already ahead of the curve.
You know, I'm always like, I gotta write that down and Larry's like, wait, Patrick's all over. Okay, cool.
And if we want to see Patrick turn the shade of pink, we can remember that he won an award last year.
Yes.
Very proud of him and his leadership.
Yeah, well, thank, you know, um, as I said, as I tell my colleagues around the state, any success and reputation that we enjoy is of course because of primarily because of the staff um that do the work, but also our board's support. Um, without your support, uh, we're not able to earn uh that reputation, so thank you. Yeah, we'll have a good day.
All right, next up is our Auditor's Office Election Division. Present on the twenty twenty five precinct meetings plan, we'll give them a chance to get up here and we'll get rolling with that.
Election precincts, take two.
All right. Any extra chairs, Mary? You know, this is always a low stress presentation because you guys always have it dialed in.
Oh, yeah.
So first, I want to introduce my staff. I don't know Phil Moloney, this is Lynn Watanabe. She is, uh, she's a person who runs the ballot processing center and all of those people, she's amazing. Today's your birthday.
Happy birthday, Lynn.
So we have donuts left upstairs from yesterday's birthday.
They are trying to
DePauler is my elections manager, who is uh amazing. He's won the employee, uh, Secretary of State's auditor or auditor employee of the year award twice, which is uh the only person in the state who's done that.
Back to back?
Back to back.
Not back to back, but twice, which is pretty amazing.
Congratulations.
So anyway, uh, I agree with Patrick. I mean, staff makes the world go round, right?
Okay, I'll take it. You made it, I'll take it.
Paper copy, Lynn, do you need a paper copy?
I have it on my hands, I'm perfect, I'll save. Thank you.
All right, so as I mentioned, um, the first time I was down here today, this is an exercise that we do every year because of city annexations, but mainly because Thurston County is growing so much. Um, so today, uh, currently, we have two hundred and eighty seven precincts, but by the time we make these changes, we're gonna gain seven to two hundred and ninety four. And um, a couple are due to annexations, but most are because we've grown so much. And I talked a little bit uh with you, Commissioner Grant, about when we, you know, why or when we split precincts and the rules that govern what we do. Um, so we can't cross county commissioner boundaries legislative congressional. But school districts can have be in two precincts. You know, we can have precinct lines going down the middle of school and fire and and things like that. We call those splits and Lynn will be talking about some of those today. Everything we do is according to statute, um, which is pretty much what we're used to following. Those are our policies and procedures, so we're pretty uh pretty big sticklers about following the letter of the law. And the reason we're here is really to just show you what is coming up because we're gonna be putting in an A I S to have um a public hearing, a meeting with you and then asking you to call for a public hearing. That meeting is set for, not set yet, but will be soon, um, for March eighteenth. So this is just a preview of that and what we'll be posting on our websites and things like that. So I'm gonna go ahead and turn it over to uh to Lynn.
Thank you, Auditor Hall. All right, again, for the, I have to do for the record, Lynn Watanabe. Um, so we're gonna go over um five City of Lacey annexations. Uh, Dram Road, Cuyahoga Park North, Dram Road Island, Cuyahoga Park North Island One, Cuyahoga Park North Island Two. And then we have seven precinct adjustments due to the number of active registered voters approaching fifteen hundred and then four precinct boundary adjustments. So um, the map that we did um is color coded based on the county commissioner districts. Um, and then the white is the areas that we'll be looking at. So the first area is the City of Lacey. Um, they had two sets of annexations, Dram Road and Cuyahoga Park North annexations. They had some into twenty twenty four and then they'll have some that'll be effective March first of this year. So here we have a list of the precincts involved um with their voter totals. Did you want me to go through M L out or? More first sense? Okay. Um, I did want to uh put a note out there that um in this area, Carpenter Carpenter Road is a county commissioner district boundary. So the northern part is the Cuyahoga Park North uh annexation and then the southern part in Pleasant Glade is the Dram Road. And so we um are gonna be moving the annex areas west of Carpenter Road to Lacey fifty three, uh, which is about fourteen voters. And then the annex area east of Carpenter Road to Lacey fifty five, which doesn't have any voters.
So I have I have questions.
Sure.
I'm confused. Will you go back a slide?
Yes.
I don't think I'm confused, I just think I need extra help here. I'm the newbie.
No problem.
Frame a new new card. Um, so when we, so the the white is kind of where we're making a few adjustments, right?
Yes, so.
And if you go back one, yeah, um, so like when it says Lacey number twenty four adjustment, it's a little dot over there, then what what is being adjusted? So it means that it's moving into or out of the current area?
Not necessarily, so it's just a precinct boundary adjustment. So either, in this case, Lacey twenty four is gonna be split because it's going, it has two, um, it's reaching the maximum amount of voters.
She'll go through them one by one.
Oh, she will, okay.
Yes.
We're starting, we're starting with the with the annexations.
Oh, I see, okay, sorry.
If we, if we could, we're gonna pause the presentation just for a second, bring the zoom back up. It cancels out when after forty minutes of inactivity, so let's just take one sec. Sorry about that.
Okay, sorry, I don't know. I'm like, wait, I don't know if I'm gonna live in my
Sorry about that, yes, we'll go through each one and a couple slides.
We'll have a new district.
Precinct.
All right, I'll be quiet then.
Feel free to ask any questions.
At the end.
At the end, yeah.
Careful you ask for.
So this is the um end result. So the new voter total of Hawk Acres will not have changed, um, six eighty two, new voter total of Woodland um will not have changed because there aren't any voters in there. The new voter total of Pleasant Glade is reduced and it, uh, and new voter total is four hundred and fifty three. And the new voter total of Lacey fifty three um gains fourteen voters, so originally it had zero voters. And the new voter total of Lacey fifty five is one thousand eighty six. And again, approximately voters affected is fourteen. Any questions on that area? All right, so this is the twenty twenty five annexations that are gonna be effective March first. Again, um Carpenter Road is a county commissioner boundary, um, but also around the Tomy precinct, there's a public utility district boundary. That kind of closes it off over there. So the northern uh annexation is the Cuyahoga Park North Islands and the southern annexation is the Dram Road Island annexation. And so we're gonna be adding the annex areas east of Carpenter Road to Lacey fifty three, which approximately three hundred and twenty three voters will be affected. And the entire Tomy precinct was annexed. And so we're gonna be creating a new Lacey precinct, it'll be Lacey sixty, and there's approximately nine voters in there. And we're gonna retire the Tomy precinct. And so the end result is the new voter total of Woodland is five hundred, new voter total of Pleasant Glade is one forty five. New voter total of Lacey fifty three is three hundred and thirty seven. And voter total of new Lacey sixty is nine, and again, about three hundred and thirty two voters affected.
When you say retire Tomy, you mean basically retire the name?
Yes, and the number. We don't reuse the precinct numbers.
Whose district is this in?
This is in
This is in
Yours?
No, no, it's not mine. Oh.
We have in the past, just to warn you, had people who are really attached to the names of precincts. Is that where you're going to?
Well, no, I just was just, I was just like the word retire, just so everybody understands what you mean by that. Like, it's not like it's not a precinct, it just has a different name. Retiring is like the name.
I know, I'm attached to my precinct name, so I'm, I always look and I'm like, oh, is it mine?
I live on Broadway, so I don't ever want to lose that.
Really, it's only if we get annexed, it kind of changes the name. Otherwise, we try to add north, south, east or west.
Keeps the name, too.
So like what happens when, so if a P C O is um, a piece, a P C O is assigned to a certain area and then it changes, what happens?
So we work really hard to not affect P C Os, but we did have a uh situation a couple of years ago where we needed to combine precincts. Is that what I can remember speaking to those P C Os?
Okay, I mean, as long as you're, you know, you work with them and then
Yeah, it was because something got annexed or
So they had to run that though?
Yeah, they
What coin flew?
I think it was with the parties, yeah, parties had to
Yeah. They resolved it, but um it was a weird situation because they actually lived together. They were You probably know the people I'm talking about, too.
Oh, yeah.
So the next area is just north of where we were. This is a precinct boundary adjustment, um, moving the precinct boundary line to follow the section line. So that little bit, um, the white dotted line is what we're gonna be moving. Um, so we're moving it from Henderson to Woodland. Um, and there's approximately sixteen voters in that area.
Why would you do that one, just to make it cleaner?
To make a cleaner uh precinct line, better, easier to understand legal, legals, and they have the same districts, so. Nothing changes for them except the precinct name. And they have the same districts, so nothing changes for them except the precinct name.
Yeah, I'm just curious because it seems like there's probably a lot of those you could do, right? If you were just trying to, you know, but this one, you, like, why pick this one to clean up? Versus the other ones were forced by, you know, problems.
As this.
Go ahead.
This one was already in the area. We were already touching Woodland.
Oh, I see. You were going to work in this whole, okay, I got you.
So if we have an opportunity to make them follow logical streets, for example, we'll do that. It just makes it easier for PCOs to know and walk their precinct. But we're required to, when you redistrict, you're required to follow like census geography. And there are a lot of reasons why precincts were drawn the original way, which quite often no longer exist. But they've been that precinct for decades.
So the new voter total of Woodland is 516. New voter total of Henderson is 980. And again, approximately 16 voters are affected. Questions on that one? The next area we're going to look at is the precinct called Forest. And this one is approaching the 1,500 voter mark. And so we're going to divide Forest north and south along 25th Avenue. And the portion south is to be renamed Forest South and retain the precinct number of 115. And the portion north is to be named Forest North and given a new precinct number of 17. So then the voter total of Forest South will be 623. And the voter total of new Forest North will be 784. Any questions? All right, the next area is McIntosh. It has, it's approaching 1,500 voters, and we're also going to do some precinct boundary adjustments. It's a note in here that McIntosh is split by school and fire district boundaries. So currently it has six splits. So we're going to divide McIntosh east and west along the school district boundary. The portion east to be renamed McIntosh East and retain the precinct number of 149. And the portion west to be named McIntosh West and given a new precinct number of 14. Approximate voters affected is 692. So the new voter total of McIntosh East is 756. And the voter total of new McIntosh West is 692. And in doing this split, McIntosh East has only two splits. And the McIntosh West has four. And so after this, the precinct boundary adjustment that we'd like to do is one of those splits is in those purple portions up above. And so we're going to be moving those into Stedman because it's the same jurisdictions. And then there's a small sliver of Stedman that has the same jurisdictions as the portion of McIntosh West right to the south of it. And so those, approximate voters moved into McIntosh West is zero. And approximate voters moved to Stedman is 15.
So that'll eliminate two splits?
Uh, one split.
One split.
Yeah, one split in McIntosh West. And so the new voter total of McIntosh West is 677. And the new voter total of Stedman is 645. And so McIntosh West will only have three splits. Any questions on that one? All right, the next area is Sunwood Lakes. It's approaching 1,500 voters, and we're also doing a precinct boundary adjustment. So we're going to divide the Sunwood Lakes subdivision west along the school district boundary. And then east along the section line, and then along a few roads. And so we're going to be adding the portion of Sunwood Lakes South in the orange dotted line to Spurgeon Creek, the precinct right below. And the portion that we cut out of Sunwood Lakes is going to retain the precinct number of 165 and be named Sunwood Lakes South. And the portion north is going to be named Sunwood Lakes North and given a new precinct number of 15. The approximate voters moved to Spurgeon Creek is 66. And the approximate voters in the newly created precinct is 550. So the new voter total of Sunwood Lakes South is 797. The new voter total of Sunwood Lakes North is 550. And the new voter total of Spurgeon Creek is 475. Questions on that one? Next is the Beaver Creek precinct, approaching 1,500 voters. And we're also doing a precinct boundary adjustment. Beaver Creek currently has three splits due to fire and cemetery district lines. And so here, we're going to divide Beaver Creek north and south along the section line. And the portion south has two splits. And so those, that portion south is going to be renamed Beaver Creek South. I'm retaining the precinct number of 199. The portion north is one whole split. And it's going to be named Beaver Creek North and given a new precinct number of 16. And approximate voters affected is 657. So again, the portion north is going to be one whole precinct with no splits. And then the portion south will have two splits. And so the new voter total of Beaver Creek South is 784. And the voter total of new Beaver Creek North is 657. Questions? All right, the precinct boundary adjustment here, when we were going through legals, we just realized we needed to update legals and the precinct boundary due to a change in a parcel boundary. So this is just a minor thing. No voters were affected. So just moving that little bit of the parcel. So no changes to the voter totals. Any questions? Next is Lacey 24, and it's approaching 1,500 registered voters.
That little tiny white spot?
Yeah. And so we're going to divide Lacey 24 north and south along the section line. Lacey 24 is reformed from the area north. And the newly created Lacey 59 is going to be created from the southern part. So the new voter total of Lacey 24 is 679. And the voter total of new Lacey 59 is 718. Questions? Next is Yelm. We're going to look at two precincts, Yelm Three and Yelm Four, both approaching 1,500 registered voters. So starting with Yelm Three, we're going to divide Yelm Three north and south along Railway Road and Middle Road. Yelm Three is going to be reformed from the southern area. We're going to create a new Yelm Seven from the northern area. So the new voter total of Yelm Three is 696. And the voter total of new Yelm Seven is about 784. And then Yelm Four, divide Yelm Four north and south along Tahoma Boulevard. And then, and then north along the section line. Yelm Four is reformed from the southern area. And then create new Yelm Eight from the northern area. So the new voter total of Yelm Four is 565. And the voter total of new Yelm Eight is 710. And this area has some housing developments that are getting built right now. Any questions on that one?
You have no problem with PCOs out there because there aren't any. Oh, there's some, one of them. But not very many anymore.
So the results is a 2025 precinct count of 294. Approximate voters affected, 5,235. Voting precincts divided, there were seven. And voting precincts added due to City of Lacey annexations, there was one. And then precincts approaching 1,500 voters, there were seven. Voting precincts repealed was one. Voting precincts name changed was four, adding the directional to those names. Precinct boundary adjustments due to City of Lacey annexations and precinct boundary adjustments were seven. Precincts approaching, excuse me, 1,500 voters and precinct boundary adjustments were nine. Precinct legal descriptions added due to City of Lacey annexations was one. And precincts approaching 1,500 voters, seven. Precinct legal descriptions repealed was one. Precinct legal descriptions amended due to City of Lacey annexations and precinct boundary adjustments was four. Precincts approaching 1,500 voters and precinct boundary adjustments is 10. And then commissioner district legal descriptions amended. So again, commissioner district legals are written based on the names of the precincts. So these are only internal precinct changes, no boundary changes, and no voter total changes. So to three. Commissioner District Number Two was amended to reflect four added precincts and one repealed precinct. Commissioner District Four was amended to reflect three added precincts and three renamed precincts. And Commissioner District Five was amended to reflect one added precinct and one renamed precinct. Any questions on those?
So what, where we go from here is we'll be putting in an AIS with the March date, as I mentioned. And then on March 18th, when we have that, is we will put that up on our website. And then we'll ask you to set a date for the public hearing, which we need to have April 15th. We've only got this really tiny window before filing week to get these modified. And it's, it didn't used to be this tight of a timeframe because we used to have a primary in September, if you remember. But since they moved it, moved it up, and filing week is now in, or filing week was in July. Filing was in July, now filing week is May. So, so anyway, we don't typically have the public come and talk about the precincts, but it's required by state law. So, so that's what we're, that's what we're doing, and that's why we're here. So any questions? Michelle Pratt?
No, I just, it's a lot. My district is growing.
Yes, it is.
I think it's, yeah, anyway, it's just, you know, one way to watch growth. And, and it also means that more people are voting. Or that could be, I mean, it's not necessarily growth, it could just be that more people are being engaged, so.
Yeah.
It's good.
Yeah, I know you're not the population, like, it obviously factors into your work. And you said the county's growing. We hit 300,000 for our, you know, five commissioners. Is our official population still above 300,000? Is that like OFM that does the official?
Yeah, that's more OFM, but I know they did do like a mini census during the summer. I don't know if any of you got the form, but I did, and my husband did. So we could probably look on the census website to see that. OFM probably has the data. That's usually where people go.
I was curious because there's a bill in the legislature to like create, to kind of refine some of the seats on this building card council. And it would be like a county over 300,000 and a county under. So I was, you know, if it's under, if we're not over 300, I would get kicked out potentially.
We're not shrinking, I can tell you that.
I'm pretty sure. Are you able to tell like shifts versus immigration versus emigration?
Well, I think what you saw today, I've never, I don't think we've ever been before the board with having to split this many precincts.
That's quite a deal.
Yeah, I mean, not in the 10-plus years I've been auditor and, you know.
You, you mentioned, I'm not going to, flight, right? From certain places to movement to other places. Are you able to like kind of tell if it's like a shifting of the population or a influx of population?
Have you seen any precinct shrink?
Not really, and not really, and especially after a presidential. Because that's when the numbers really go up. Those don't really go down in a presidential year, so they go up. There, a lot of these are, there's a lot of new housing developments being built.
Yeah.
So.
I'm sure anyone that flees out of, say, Olympia would be replaced by growth, just people.
Yeah.
Because housing's tight and all that.
I mean, District Five is the fastest growing district, but District Four is growing too. So, you know, it's pretty saturated where, where you are and, you know, commissioner, where you are. So, but yeah, we're definitely growing.
Okay, well, thank you, guys. Appreciate it. Good presentation. Next up is our Pac Mountain Workforce Development 2023-2024 Annual Report.
Hi.
Good to see you in person.
In person, hi. Good to see you, Ashen, too, I think.
Good morning. I appreciate having the opportunity to be in front of you all to talk about what's been going on in Pac Mountain in our, in our region for the last, it's been over a year at this point. Our report came out at the end of September. Scheduling was a bit of a challenge, so we would prefer to get these done a little bit earlier in the year. So we'll be speaking to what happened in the last program year, which ran through, it's June through July. So it finished up this past July, and we're in the current program year of PY 25, or 24, I'm sorry. So we're going to start with the annual report. Everything we've given you is available online on the Pac Mountain website and our governing documents. So if folks online or in the community want to follow along, they can find them there. So we re-instituted our annual report. It's something that, for some reason, we stopped doing prior to the pandemic. So we picked it back up as we moved into a new four-year cycle that aligns to the state's four-year plan that we just recently completed. Just looking through the document, you'll see our, our board representation here. We have had a number of turnover in our employer representation, but we're happy to report as of today, we have the last nomination to fill that seat. The employer representation is key because we are a demand-driven system. Pac Mountain is here to serve employers. And we also, as, as it relates to that work, serve the job seekers that would fill those occupations. You can see our current staff photos as well. We have 22 at the moment, positions. We do have one opening for an accountant that we're hoping to get filled very soon. But this is a fairly tight staff. We have been, worked very hard to make sure that we're spending within our means and not depleting resources that we need to be able to sustain fluctuations in resources, which we're going to speak to you in just a little, a little bit. Then we do have, and we did not include in the original packet ahead of time, but we did include in your packet our legislative priorities, agenda that we put together in partnership with Washington Workforce Association. I am chair this year, and it is a pivotal relationship that, that we have with our peers throughout the state to make sure that we are advocating for resources that allow us to do the work that we do. The big topic this year for us, of course, like everyone, is the budget constraints and the directions from the governor around fiscal responsibility and making sure that we're providing services and experience for the constituents around the state that they feel like they're getting a return on that investment. So we are advocating for closing the gap in the current budget. Ferguson adopted Enslie's budget. We're anxiously awaiting the two chamber budgets to come out. Currently, we are funded at $20.4 million in EXA. But where we have a gap is the community reinvestment project is not in the budget. And we pulled $48.25 million into the program. And the program has been very successful. There's a significant return on this investment. So this program is a positive impact on the economy in terms, I believe it's $2.34 a return per dollar. It's, it's in the stock, we got $2.34. What's interesting about the program, it does have a focus on the BIPOC community. In, in our region, we have performed very well in terms of. In in our region, we have performed very well in terms of connecting to those populations, largely because we've been able to engage the tribes in a different way, a different strategy. We have a team member focused on those relationships and we are building a really solid partnership that provided the funding, we'll be able to continue that program. And we'll talk a little bit about the program outcomes when we get to that. But just wanted to make sure you see that this is the kind of work that the partnership with the association gives us. You can also see kind of the sponsorships and how we support economic development strategies across the region on page nine. But then we'd get pages to ten, eleven. This is really kind of our core work. In twenty twelve, my predecessor led a process to do a cluster study. So we look at occupations across the region, how they come together to form our local economy as a region, and then within each of the communities. This is how we identified these six sectors as priorities. If you look on the left-hand side, you could see like things like the average wages, the number of services and things like that. We are starting to really see an impact of being focused not only on specific sectors, but part of our one workforce strategy model is that we are looking to invest in specific occupations that our economic fellow partners and our economists tell us will have the most impact. It's what we hear from employers in terms of lacking talent. And so being able to strategize around specific occupations gives us the ability to connect folks with with great paying jobs, but also make sure that the employers that drive our local economy have the talent they need. We, in the past two or few months, we've had two accolades for Olympia specifically. Most recently, the Milken Institute called out Olympia for its tech boom, which is exciting. We do have IT as one of our priority sectors. And a bit earlier, the Pew Research Center acknowledged that Olympia is the number one middle-class city in the country. I think these are significant accomplishments, a reflection of the work that's been led by Michael Cade, who's our current board chair, and the Thurston County Economic Development Corporation, and also the work that the group of partners that formed Thurston Strong during the pandemic, we're still seeing the results of that every day. They've also recently released a new SED, which is a Community Economic Development Plan for our region. It does not include Lewis County, which is a part of our five-county strategy, but this document will now become the the guiding documents and we will redo our cluster study in the next year or so to make sure that what we're seeing in terms of the data still supports these specific sectors as our priorities.
I want to just pause it.
Yeah, absolutely.
I want to just call this out because it's, this is incredible, this this sector said that this is incredible work and this graphic is incredible. This tells me, and this is just, I just want to say this publicly and out loud, that in, you know, these are the sectors that we're working on and in healthcare, we have two in these, this area, we have two hundred and eleven thousand people currently working in healthcare with twenty-five thousand three hundred and seventy-three projected new jobs in twenty twenty-four. The closest that even comes behind that, how many new jobs would be projected in in a certain area is about is under two thousand. Therefore, the the need for us to focus money and education incentives in this area of healthcare, and that includes mental health and behavioral health, substance use disorder, all health, is incredibly important. And I just want to make sure we call that out.
We are short well over a thousand nurses in our region. It's been as high as five thousand at one point. So the context of the labor shortage in in the healthcare sector is incredible. We have great partners. We're bringing on a new board member out of Lewis County that works with Providence. We're very excited about that. It's the first time we've had healthcare on our board in a very long time. This sector strategy is a best practice and it does coincide with the quality jobs, which I'll speak to. Go ahead, Commissioner.
I was going to say, you could say the opposite, too. If that's where it's healthy, that's not necessarily where you you would want to focus your resources.
No, I'm saying I'm.
I mean, I just just to be devil's advocate, but I look at the the benefits cliff, you know, paper. One of our communities is is pushing hard for increasing the minimum wage. Do you guys have a position on, you know, what that should look like or what that what that conversation should be, how that conversation should be shaped? Because when I when I look at, you know, the the benefit cliff thing is, I mean, I really hadn't looked at it in that, you know, frame of reference.
Are you speaking specifically to the graphic?
Yeah, where it says, you know, eighteen dollars an hour versus nineteen dollars an hour. And when you when you bump it up, you know, one one community is talking about a twenty dollar an hour minimum wage, you you would be depriving people of things.
Yeah. So we don't have a specific position on minimum wage. The way we frame that conversation is the federal poverty measure is two hundred percent of the federal poverty level is considered poverty. In Washington, that would be abject poverty. There's a lot of things that drive a household's ability to be economically sufficient, which is how those determinations are made of whether you're on a benefit cliff or not. So one of the strategies specifically with the Economic Security For All program and why we like it as a strategy to get people to self-sufficiency is we calculate their household need. It is possible that there could be someone in their household that is not working, that could work a part-time job, and it would get their household to self-sufficiency. We are in desperate need of the state revisiting our strategy around TANF and SNAP. The program models that we have in place are outdated. They're not common practice in 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 many states around the state any longer. And in favor of that, and the
Like what?
The the strategy of how we stand up those programs and the strategy is largely focused on keeping people eligible for those resources versus working within a household to figure out a strategy to get someone to self-sufficiency without the the dangers of the cliff. And that's exactly what Economic Security For All allows us to do is to resource a family to navigate the gap without, once they lose those dependencies, TANF and SNAP specifically, it is an unsafe area for a family to be in. So being able to have additional resources tailored to their specific deeds allows us to develop a strategy to develop their occupational skills, connect them to an occupation that gets them to where they need to be and smooths that out. So they don't suddenly struggle to have resources for food, as an example, or resources to pay for flat tires, car repairs, other types of things that crop up. Childcare is another big one. We we can't serve childcare issue or resolve childcare issues through workforce development. We need folks like you to make decisions to help us correct the shortages that we have in in childcare, but making sure that a family has the resources and considering the cost of childcare in their household budget is important. Another key aspect of poverty reduction is a household budget, helping them understand how to take their their earnings and build a budget that allows them to be able to meet their obligations and start to build savings and wealth. And part of CRP, it brought in resources to do incentive payments, which is how we bridge the gap. They have to perform against their employment plan. So when we sit down with them, we create a household budget, they go through financial coaching, and then we create an employment plan based on what wage and earnings they need. Then they pick a career. This past year, we placed, or this current program year, we've already gotten seventy-seven households or individuals in their households to self-sufficiency. We have thirty-eight that are placed in employment and and making progress on their plans. So the seventy-seven folks received incentives of average of six months, which is on par with the state. It's a thousand dollars a month and they have to do things like complete occupational skill training, build a family budget, work on their job readiness, so interviewing skills, resumes, things like that. But it all circles back to picking an occupation that aligns to their interests and making sure that we can get them the appropriate skills and work experience to be successful. So that model really does work. Getting the household to self-sufficiency brings tax revenue into the state. It also lowers the burden on those social programs.
Real simple. If the benefit cliff is a thing, would you say that setting a minimum wage of over that nineteen an hour would push people over a benefit cliff?
It could, yes, yes. It depends on their household because it's not individual. Minimum wage is an individual salary. It does not address the ability for someone to get to self-sufficiency directly. It's about their household. So you don't, unless you're a single person in a household.
Which would be the most vulnerable people.
But also, not necessarily if you're able to work. If you're physically able, mentally able to go to work and you're not working, you would not be eligible for TANF, as an example, right? So your your determination does take your household into concern. So a minimum wage doesn't directly address the cliff from that perspective. Sorry if that felt like a non-answer, but that that is how we view it and we're focused on the household. And this resource strategy is working across the state. We're starting to see people move out. We also focus on people who are in the ALIS population. So those are the working poor. People are working two, three jobs to get enough income, but they still struggle to meet basic needs, so they're likely on TANF or SNAP, as an example. That population is the folks that are most likely going to slide into poverty if they have some type of event. And then also making that jump that would make them ineligible for SNAP is a concern and we find people that turn down wage increases because it does impact their food. And that dollar an hour more doesn't make up for the benefit that they would lose. So there is a gap. So with Exa, we're all in a position for the first time to work with that population. So as we move people out of poverty, it stays at about ten percent. And the reason is, is we have a lot of people in the ALIS population, which Thurston County isn't growing as strong as the other counties. For example, Grace Harbor County, forty percent of the households are in either poverty or ALIS. It's a bit lower here in Thurston County, but where we have seen growth is ALIS across the entire state. That's largely driven by healthcare costs, childcare costs, housing costs, those things, right? Any other questions? Great questions, by the way.
No, but I I do want to, I'm going to just circle back on the healthcare thing. I I guess what I meant to say around this healthcare thing is that this is a staggering number, that twenty-five thousand empty or new jobs, meaning that we have to focus workforce efforts into that, meaning we have to train and make sure we can fill those spots where the people in our area do not stay healthy. That's because every time we have a vacancy, it just causes no one to be able to get an appointment.
But let's not close Evergreen to try to solve.
That's the funniest thing I've ever heard.
Certainly don't make a UW there's a bill.
Well, remember.
Anti-Husky.
Yeah.
Every step of the way.
Exactly.
If there was a WSU proposal.
My dad started, look, Evergreen is, my dad started Evergreen State.
I knew I could, I knew I could say that to you.
And remember, I worked for the last two years on nothing but healthcare workforce. So this is important and and I've just seen the incredible staggering numbers that we can save in long-term healthcare outcomes if we focus on making sure people coming out of South Asia Sound, people coming out of out of Olympic College, you know, and that we're training kids in high school. Like, how do I make sure my capital high school kids know what the heck a nurse does or a behavioral health tech does? Or, and my own kids didn't, don't know that, let alone, and I work in the area. So that's what I'm saying, is that we have to make sure, we can fill a thousand spots in hospitality, but how are we, we have to do many, many more steps behind the scenes in order to fill spots in healthcare.
Expand New Market Skills Center.
Yeah, exactly.
That is the, that is my, that is my answer to that.
There's a whole pipeline that has to be looked at around healthcare instead of just, okay, we're going to give somebody two weeks of training and put them in hospitality. So that's.
So the CTE programs, a lot of people don't think about health science as as a CTE, a good model for CTE, but it actually is. One of the things that we advocate for in unfortunately the state's current funded model for higher ed, and to some degree K-12, is focused on enrollments, not outcomes. And it also only awards for degree, right? And that is a challenge that doesn't incentivize the colleges, especially as they are all increasingly experiencing budget challenges, to build programs that are non-credit that could stack into degree programs. Most of the occupations we have at our top thirty occupations, which are career pathways, it's probably about a hundred and thirty jobs that are currently on our, on Indeed, on Workforce Law, which is the state's employment website. The skill sets for those do not require a degree, right? Now, nursing does, but you could start a incremental pathway towards a nursing degree as a CNA. And being able to have a program model set up to where people can do that escalation is very, very important and we need K-12 and higher ed education reform around funding to be able to accomplish it. We are a degree-first state. Enslie was very focused on getting people that two- or four-year degree. The data is changing on that. I, as many employers as we talked to around welding in our region, no one says they want more two-year degree welding programs. They're skill-focused, credential-focused. Do they have certifications in MIG and TIG? Do we do aluminum welding? Right now, we have an employer in Shelton, and employers across our region looking for aluminum welding and we have no program. We've convened around our sector strategy to work with the educators in the region and the employers, and we have gotten nowhere because they have traditional welding programs that they can fill and people get jobs with those. So there isn't the right financial incentives in the education system to build new programs that can align to the end-demand skill sets. And they change frequently. And the college system, anything in the public sector, doesn't change quickly because it is very hard to navigate the laws, the rules, the the way the legislation's been put together in the past. And it's also hard to change people's minds about the value of a two- or four-year degree versus an occupational specific credential. In Washington, it's very hard to get an industry-recognized credential approved and on the eligible training provider list that we can use. It is geared, but if you offer a degree, like a high school degree or a two- or four-year degree, it's automatic, right? And I think that it's important to have those two and four-year degrees, but it's critical that we reinvest in CTE programs, not at New Market Skill Center, but in every high school across the region. Most of the occupations that are technically oriented require the same foundation skills and employers want to do their own training to some degree, but they need people to show up and have some basic math, safety, credential-like forklift flagging. Those are universal skills that many of these jobs can start with and the employers can start with those skill sets and give people the outcome. But we have very little capacity to do that. We are considered, most of our regions, considered a training desert. If we don't work with the next, a non-education entity to do the training, we would not be able to have the success we've had with the trainings that we've done. So just a bit more on the program highlights. We we talked about poverty reduction. We owe it as our federal resources. We are flat this year, which is fantastic news going into PY twenty-five. We are concerned that that will be significantly reduced and along with the reductions in CRP, it could have, it will literally halt poverty reduction and reduce our ability to serve employers and job seekers significantly. We did do two projects with the county. We finished up the Job Champion Program, which was, we took unemployed people, connected them with community-based organizations to get them work experience and about seventy-five percent of those folks retained employment with those community-based organizations. We literally just wrapped up the Ag project. We significantly exceeded the targets on that program. We ended up with twenty-seven folks doing OJT's. Sixty local farms and butcheries received support with those OJT placements and fifty percent of those folks retained employment within that critical sector in our region. Those were all funded with ARPA funding. Then I will call out page thirteen. We do have the WorkX program. That is operated at JBLM, but it is supported by the Thurston County Chamber of Commerce. From a programming perspective, this is a critical transition for folks leaving service and staying in our communities. And it has such a significant impact on our our local economy. And then on, just really quickly on our our financial review, we have worked very hard to diversify funding. My first three budgets were fifteen percent, fifteen percent, fifteen percent reductions at the federal level. So we worked really hard not only to pull in and and grow those state resources, but we've got some competitive grants as well. So the percentage of our formula funding, which is directly connected to the counties and what the you all are responsible for in the end, at the end, is a shrinking percentage of our funding model. It also allows us to leverage other programs and the subject matter expertise that those programs give us. We are not housing experts, so to duplicate that service compared to the partners, we don't have the expertise and we don't have the funding to do that work at a quality level. So that co-investment for multiple programs is key to driving our outcomes. And the last piece, and we're going to talk a little bit about our And the last piece, and we're going to talk a little bit about our big hairy audacious goal. So, we're looking to place 2,100 folks into high-wage opportunities that we've identified on the 30 by 30 campaign. We did include the, some key documents out of the toolkit. It is literally coming, and these came off the press at the end of last week, and it's going live before the end of the month. This is really focused at using data to target specific communities and types of folks depending on their support needs to connect them to local opportunities. Most people, like in Grace Harbor County, as an example, feel like they need to go to Tacoma to get a great job. That is not true. They could get jobs in their neighborhood that pay family-sustaining wages. And it's important that we connect that talent because those employers are desperate to get them. Grace Harbor County specifically has the highest, well, the lowest prime working age, which is 24 to 59. Only 63% of that population is, are in the workforce. That equates to 3,900 people that are, should be in the, and working if it was comparable to the state and national averages, which are around 83%. So, there's a lot of opportunity talent-wise there. It's just a very long road for those folks to get into those types of jobs. EXA is a key resource and us being able to change that. And employers in Thurston County are dependent on labor outside of the county as well. So, we need to have that holistic regional strategy on development. So, this is really focused on helping employers connect to talent, community-based organizations that serve people that have employment needs, and also the job seekers connecting to those specific opportunities. And then the last piece is the local plan. So, we spent 18 months strategizing, pulling data and information together. We had several convenings with board members and the consortium members, which Commissioner Mejia was a part of. And Commissioner Grant, you'll get to experience that. And thank you so much for your support during that process and your service on the committee. This plan aligns to the state plan. It really was a lot of effort to revisit all of the data points that drive us around our sector strategies. It was exciting to hear the prosecutor earlier speak about quality jobs and the environment, culture in the organization. My organization has gone through that process as well. We're looking not only compensation and benefits, but workplace culture, investing in our current staff. When I first came in, we had some pretty low, pretty negative feedback from our staff. And I'm happy to report the last survey that we did produced really fantastic results. 100% of the staff participated, 100% said that they understand how their job fits into the bigger strategies, which are what we developed in this four-year plan. It is also why we brought back the annual report. We want to make sure that we're accountable to this plan. We spent a lot of time, a lot of resource to develop it, a lot of very specific input and outcomes. And we want to make sure that we're holding, not only ourselves, but our partners in the representation from agencies, as an example, on the board. And then, so if you look at the document that is the local plan overview, it gives us our three key strategies or objectives. The first one is job quality. By 2028, employers and job seekers are actively engaged in the development implementation of a regional quality job framework. So, we are getting close to releasing the standard. We've been using Southwest Washington's Quality Jobs Model. It is the DOL model recommended across the country. So, they've done a great job developing that. And it looks at a number of factors to help people determine whether they want to work for a company or not. One of the key functions, the very first one for our workforce board, is to provide labor market information so people can make informed decisions about their career. So, this fits into that really nicely, and it goes beyond just data points. It does speak to culture, it does speak to professional development, wages, benefits. Are, is the employer engaged in addressing healthcare, childcare, and housing issues in the community? And we have some fantastic examples in this community and in every community in the five counties that we represent. People are already doing this organically. So, getting people, more employers to really take this guidance will help them lay in and fill these positions that they've struggled to fill. The second one is around credential and training. By 2028, employers and job seekers have increased access to industry-recognized credential opportunities that enhance economic success. The state's plan will say degrees. We're focused on the credentials that communicate to employers that this person that we're recommending has the skills needed for the job. And this, employers are responding to this one specifically in a very positive way. We also are experiencing much greater or stronger relationships with employers. Typically, the workforce system has not served the employers. It's been focused on serving the job seekers, so it's not very outcome-focused. We've changed that over the past three years, and employers are starting to notice, and we're excited about that. The last one is system integration, probably the one that we're going to struggle with the most. By 2028, expand access to the regional workforce development system by developing strategic partnerships, integrating service, system, or system services, data accountability, a big one for me, and resources. So, I will say that we have in our communities the resources to serve the folks that need those resources. What we lack is effective coordination and connectivity to those programs. So, I'll end with, and take questions if we have time for it. We are, we have an abundance of real estate in our region dedicated to WorkSource, and it affects our ability to serve. And we're, we've been pursuing for employment security, the state agency that holds the current leases, to do some reform. It does align with the governor's directives around 60% reductions at the state level from the agencies. We expect that number to go significantly higher. And one of the best ways for us in our region to achieve that is to reduce our footprint of WorkSource. Folks do not seek the in-person work, especially in this county, because they have good access to broadband. Where we don't have good broadband access, those services in-person are leveraged more largely because of the technology. So, we really need to rethink that strategy. We've had a lot of issues engaging in employment security on that. We discussed it in the last consortium meeting with the commissioners from around the region. And it's clear to me that we're not going to be able to afford to provide the level of service that we're doing now if we don't reduce those footprints and costs. For example, $28,000 a month lease for the Tumwater facility, it is less than half utilized. It's an extraordinary waste, and the agency is not budging on that. So, we're going to up it a little bit and ask them, if you continue to lease that facility, what is your plan to reduce cost to our partners? Our partners pay the largest infrastructure agreement, which is the shared resources all of our 22 partners have to fund. It's the largest in the state, and there's no reason for it to be that large. Questions? Comments?
I don't have any questions. You know, I've been, I was on the PAC Mountain Board through the different transition and really just appreciated the work that you have all done. I also appreciated the partnership, especially as we were going through COVID. And once we got the ARPA funds, PAC Mountain was a valuable partner in helping get funds out. You ran, you helped along with the EDC, the agricultural program. And I know that took a lot of effort, the workforce program, and it was just beneficial. So, just, you know, just a thank you for the work that you've done and for continuing to be great partners.
Yeah, and I have to say that the county team was super, it was challenging navigating the rules and the different changes in the beginning and making sure that we were in compliance from a monitoring perspective, which was difficult. But the county team did such a great job supporting us on that. And the outcomes of that, beyond the employers and the individuals that we placed with those employers, we have a clear understanding of what's important in that sector. And food production is important to other sectors as well. Hospitality, the farm-to-table thing is huge. We do the Food Box program in our organization, and I love it. All of that really comes back to the work that Thurston Strong did, the leadership that the EDC and ASLME specifically did with the project down in Tonito, employing all that together. It's been really exciting. I joined the efforts late, of course. But to see how far we've come since those early efforts around food production and the impact we're having on these small, family-owned businesses, it's really extraordinary. We're largely small employers. And if we're not focused on making sure that they have transition plans and the talent they need, it's going to have a negative impact on our economy. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Move us to our last item in the morning's agenda, Commissioner item number one, Burford Park. And we have a document in our packet. County manager, are you going to do that one?
Yeah. Thank you. Okay, so I'm, last year, we heard from constituents at Burford Park about a proposal that they have. And it was in regards to expanding Burford Park with the properties that the county owned. And we heard also from staff in regards to the need to, to follow process and do a post-plan. And so, just in conversations and filling in the Boston Harbor community, my request is that they respect that we have to go through a post-plan and a process, and they are completely okay with that. But what they are asking for the county to do is to hold on to those properties until we complete a post-plan. And that way, if it fits into the post-plan, this is something that can be done in the future. So, I guess the direction that I'm seeking from the board is to hold on to those properties that the Burford community have kind of signaled to, and they've attached that into their proposal until the county funds a post-plan and goes through with it, and we see the results, and I kind of go from there. So, I'm just, the only direction I'm asking is, I guess, just a hold on those properties to not sell them or use them for another purpose until we go through with the post-plan.
Makes sense to me. What's our, what's our status on a post-plan?
Well, we haven't funded it yet.
Yeah, we would need to bring that back for consideration for funding. It's something that Public Works has asked for funding in years past, and just we haven't been able to get there.
Can I be funded out of park impact fees?
Can we just discuss that?
We already got legal, actually, legal opinion on that, and it cannot.
But there is, right now, no designs for those parcels. So, this, if the board gives us this direction, we can absolutely, it's not like we're pushing any plans around. We can just hold on to those until we're ready to come back and allow Public Works the time to put that together and present it to the board.
Do we have like a timeframe on?
No, well, we'll go through the budget process, and if that's something that the board would want, it would be. If that's something the board wants to consider, then we can add it in.
I don't know, I mean, let's be a little more explicit. Like, I don't know the different things that county staff can do without the board knowing about it. But let's just say that nothing will be done if we're scared to status or disposition of these properties without being brought back to the board.
Absolutely.
And then that just kind of clears it all up.
Because we couldn't do anything without.
But then if something comes up, then we can weigh in.
Well, I would say absolutely, and that is what already exists because the board has the authority to lease, sell, like, the board gives the direction on that, so.
Yeah, but you know, like, there's properties where, like, we found out, I'm thinking of one where we had to do some cleanup because it was like, some department was storing a bunch of stuff there. Like, they brought in a bunch of sheds. This was down on Black River. I don't think it was Public Works, but, and then they were like, they were decaying, and we had to clean them up. But it was like, I never knew that, I mean, things happen, like, that the board doesn't hear about.
So, managing of those facilities and the property and the activities versus disposing of and taking.
Yeah, legal disposition, I'm taking it, I'm saying broader. Like, I don't want the community to get freaked out because they see a bunch of new sheds and storage stuff, and they think that we're doing something else with it. I mean, just anything that's done with these properties should come to the board's attention.
Can I get some clarification when you say these properties?
The ones in this. I get that, but I want to leverage, talking about a post-plan. Sure, you know.
The ones that are outlined in the red line?
Yes.
And currently, there are no designs for those properties, correct?
There are no designs for the property, I'm going to, there are no designs for the parcels that are in the custody of Public Works within this red zone. And the reason I say that is because I'm not sure which one of these parcels may be tax title parcel. And tax title parcels are not in the purview of Public Works. They're with the treasurer's office, remembering that the treasurer's office comes to the board for permission to dispose of those parcels.
You can check the treasurer, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, what we can do is, from this meeting, we can take a look and ask our treasurer, Mr. Jeff Gaddman, if he has any of those in the queue so that we're not getting our wires crossed. But do we have any plans to do any activity, staff activity, or any type of placement of vehicles or sheds or chainsaws or whatever?
Putting up fences or just any?
Not that I'm aware of, and I'm not trying to be evasive, I just.
Not all of them are under your control.
Correct, and by looking at the, yes, I'm not sure.
Our public.
What is, right. And so, generally, if, if these are in the custody of Thurston County and they are not integral to operations or not a part of the park, generally, we wouldn't be doing anything.
I hear you, Commissioner Minster. Like, sometimes there may be activities that staff are like, oh, we have this. And I understand that we don't want to give mixed direction. We're saying we're not doing anything. And then we would hate for a fence to be put up, and then it's signaled we're doing something and cause concern. So, we'll work on the backend to make sure we understand who has involvement in any of the parcels and communicate with those departments the board's direction on this.
And Taylor, please correct me if I'm wrong. So, the red outline, so the green ones are in the possession of Public Works. It's the white spaces that are in Thurston County ownership, but it, it, it's different.
Might be tax title?
I don't think any of them are tax title just from the information that they were, that they gathered. So, they kind of were very succinct in the area, and so none of these are tax titles that we're aware of. And, but I appreciate kind of that direction to the treasurer as well, just as we go through this, just in case, you know, there's something we missed. But sometimes, what, what they said, it's Thurston County, but it's not specific which department. And so, they just left it in white. The green ones are specifically, I think, under the ownership of Public Works that they were.
Yeah, we'll do the research. It's either going to be, yeah, central services, Public Works, tax title, there may be another option, but we'll.
But I think we get the, I'm crystal clear on what the board is asking, so.
Okay, anything there? So, we're at the end of our agenda unless there's another commissioner item.
Sorry, just really quick, and this is, I wouldn't bring this up, but there is testimony for tomorrow. And this is in regard of the road usage charge. There, he did file a bill, and it's being expedited, and there is a hearing tomorrow. I'm signing up to testify. It is Bill 1921. Yes, it is 1921.
Oh, I saw it.
Sorry. And this is from Representative Fai. And so, I'm just wondering, is this something the county would like to support? If not, I'm just going to be testifying just as, as me.
Are you in support?
I'm in support of it. It, you know, will help kind of ease kind of the equity of the gas tax. And it's just another option to really help our county road funds. I'm in support.
How does it work?
I have actual notes that I actually want me to slate. I actually did this this morning, that's why.
Yeah, I'm in favor of some permutation of it, but like, there are a lot of details, and I don't know this bill. And then, how does the state figure out how many miles I've drug-driven or I self-report?
Read that, there's the notes.
I was like, I.
I mean, from yesterday, but this is what they wrote, I just copied and pasted in it, but.
So, it will be a viable alternative, of course, to the gas tax revenue.
So, will gas taxes be repealed? Or is it just?
It will transition, basically.
And it's over about 10 years, and it goes all the way like 20, I mean, they've got this whole complex thing going where essentially, you know, there's a phase one, there's a phase two. Phase one doesn't start for two years. There are multiple options for people who do not like technology. There's apps, there's a thing that plugs into your car. There is like old, it's a very complex staged-out long thing, and it's, it's pretty cool.
What is, what is that guy? It's a no for me, dog. What does he say on? I gotta remain neutral. I, I need to, I need to know more. At this point, I'm probably neutral.
The one thing that I took from this morning, and like, I've listened to it three times now, and so I've really been trying to get a better understanding and really working through it myself. And, and one of the biggest things I think that we need, that we need to think about as a board is they, is that, and Andy brought this up again this morning, that, that by 2035, we are supposed to go one hundred percent to all eat, all one hundred percent electric, and that the gas tax is just gonna go down, 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 down. So this is like, the only way we're gonna make money is to figure out a way, you know, forward. So that's the part that I've been trying to understand a little bit better, so.
Yeah.
No, I conceptually understand the issue, and I'm in favor of some, I just, you know, I mean, it's so complicated how to institute it, and I'd hate to jump onto something I don't really understand yet.
No, completely understand, and, you know, I've received presentations and kind of what, you know, WASCAC is, is in support of it too, just because of the huge gap that we're having in our transportation funding. And, you know, it's just.
That's pretty dated.
Yeah.
You've got WASCAC behind it.
The fuel tax is not, yeah. The fuel tax is not just, it's not, it's no longer a sustainable source.
And you advocating for it from Lacey?
Yeah. I think that's probably because, you know, being on TRPC and then Transportation Policy Board, we've been listening to it for a while, so it's kind of like, the understanding of how we're gonna be able to fund transportation projects is a major, it's a major impact, and, and this is their.
Somebody's crunch, I'm sure someone's crunching numbers to figure out that like, this is gonna be.
Yeah, there's a slide I pasted.
The sized, you know, it's not gonna be a.
Yeah.
Doubling a tax increase to people or, or, or a shortfall because it's not right-sized.
Yeah, and it, and it's interesting because it's mandatory. It has a thing that says from twenty-nine, thirty-one, thirty-two, thirty-three, like, all of those years, and it makes, breaks it down in a way that forty miles a gallon or higher has to do it. And then all the way down to gas cars rated at twenty miles per gallon. So the people who really don't like the old, old, old cars, it, none of this is mandatory till 2035. So it's, it's just a whole complex thing, and.
Well, someone with an EV that drives a ton of miles, I'm sure this is gonna be a major tax increase for me, but.
That's what Andy brought up today, is that he, like, he drives to his daughters in Texas, then how does that work, you know, and, yeah. With his EV.
But that's beside the point. We gotta do what's right.
You're welcome to, and I'm supporting it, so.
So just a heads up, I will be testifying in favor. I will not be testifying on behalf of the board, so.
Right.
Back at one.
Yeah, you have one?
No, he said we're back at one.
Okay, back at one, yeah. Quick lunch break, guys. We're adjourned.